All right, I call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledgeable Agent.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, there are a couple of amendments to the agenda before we approve it. First of all, the folks from Carver Ridge Senior Living are not going to be here tonight. They are ill and instead of sharing their germs, we're really thankful that they're not here tonight, but we'll make sure that we get them on another agenda sometime soon. We also are going to add item number 9.05 to new business Riverside Park, what did we call it in the work session? Riverside Riverside Park erosion discussion. So with those amendments, I will make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a second to the motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? Yep, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, community comment. We have two special guests tonight who wanted to come up and introduce themselves. We don't get guests all that often, so go ahead and you can sit down at the table. And then you've got to turn on the microphone to make sure the green light's on so we can hear you. Introduce yourselves, tell us why you're here and what you're looking forward to.
Okay, my name's Eddie. We both go to Holy Family Catholic High School and we're both in an AP government class and we're fulfilling part of our, what was it?
It's a civic participation assignment.
Yes, so we need four hours of that. We've completed three already, so we just need one more. And we're here to just, you know, learn about, learn about government, learn about how everything works.
So you guys are out of here at 8:05.
Pretty much, yeah.
Thank you.
We appreciate your honesty. Well, thanks for coming, thanks for choosing Carver, and hopefully you can learn something. Good luck with your assignments.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Any other community comments, so items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none. We'll move on to 5.1, Presentations and Reports. Fire Department Update, Fire Chief Callie Turnbull. Welcome Chief.
Hello, Mayor, City Councilmembers. I just want to walk through where we're at year-to-date. These numbers are through September. There we go.
Are you feeling better, Callie?
I am. Sorry I didn't make it last week. All right, so the first slide goes through the numbers where we're at year-to-date by district. So Carver represents 58% of our calls, Dogren Township's 21%, San Francisco Township is 14%, and Mutillay, that number's wrong, it's actually 6% of our calls, where our calls line up into our areas that we cover. Moving on, am I going the wrong way? Okay, our, yeah. Our highest call volumes on Mondays followed up by, and our lowest call volumes on Fridays. Everything else is pretty much right at 20 calls that we've had. And a significant snow event or things like that can skew that number. That's probably why Monday is higher because, you know, there was a snowstorm last, January of last year or something, that would have caused that number to go up. Slipped some falls, things like that. Moving on, I want to walk through the next two slides so you understand the following slide after that. So our calls are broke up into several different categories, and we have fires, so basically anything that has a fire in it, or has a fire on it, is listed as a fire. Medical is anything that would require medical attention. PI's, that stands for motor vehicle accidents. And then we have any type of searches for any person, so a lost person on land, water, or ice. Hazardous conditions are gas leaks, power lines down, or arcing electrical wires. Service calls would be water problems, standby, or police assist, or government agencies, say public services needed our help, or Carver County Sheriff's Department needed our help, that would fall into that category. Good intent calls would be, like if we got canceled en route, or there was a smoke in the area, but it was somebody's chimney or something like that, that doesn't actually constitute a call. And then we have false alarms, that's really system malfunctions, smoke or CO2 detector going off for no reason, if they're expired, things like that, batteries are dead. And then alarm system sounding due to malfunction. Really could be a wide range of that. And then severe weather is just severe weather. So, had to go through that to get to the next slide. So this talks about the types of calls we've done 2019 versus 2018. We'll just talk about 2019. So you can see 44% of our calls are medicals, 6% are PI's, motor vehicle accidents. We've had, 6% of our calls this year have been searches, but compared to last year we had none, so it kind of just varies. Hazardous conditions is 8%, service calls 10%, this is up 5% from the previous year. And then we have good intent calls, that's at 6%, that's up 4% from where we were last year. And then we have false alarms, that's even with where we were last year. And then severe weather at 2% and fires at 6%, which is down 2%. Guys have any questions on that? Our next, we'll just talk about the last couple of years going into 2020. So in 2016, we did 154 calls, 2017, we did 161, in 2018, we did 177, 2019, we're estimating 175. That's an estimated for November and December number we're going to hit, so we're going to be actually down a little bit. And in 2020, we're anticipating 200 calls, that's just really with Carver Ridge coming into the factor, we're anticipating one to two calls there a month.
Is it, for the Carver Ridge, is it because it's medical?
Yeah.
Does the Carver Ridge have onsite medical?
They do in some portions, but not the other portions.
Okay.
And if somebody calls 911 from their apartment, even though that they have a nurse down at the memory care center, we'll still get paged.
Got it, okay, thank you. Callie, can I just ask a question about the medical calls unrelated to Carver Ridge, but do you guys respond to every medical call in the city?
No.
Or is it a certain parameter?
There, you have to fall within a certain parameters. And a lot of it will depend on if a deputy's within five minutes, like for a sprained ankle, we might not respond if a deputy's within five minutes, but if they're more than five minutes out, we'll get paged.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Do you get paged, do you go out for every heart-related issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything life-threatening and broken legs, anything like that, we would go out. There is a, there's a minimum, you know, we have a spreadsheet down at Dispatch that says what we go out for and what we don't go out for, and then if the deputy's more than five minutes out, then we'll respond to all calls. Yeah? That's really it for my update. Do you guys have any questions for me? I'll just give you a brief update on the hiring process for 2020 officers. We, the application process ended last Friday. We are going through the applications this week, and we'll be interviewing next week, next Wednesday, and we'll have the recommendations to Brent by Friday.
How many open spaces do we have?
We're actually hiring for all of the officers this year.
Oh, for the officers, but, I'm sorry, that was, I'm off track then. How, how are we at numbers for having a full outfit of firefighters?
Oh, we're currently at 31 members. Our full is 32 at this point in time, so we'll be starting the hiring process in February.
Okay.
And right now, I think we have four applications.
Okay.
So.
That's good.
All right.
Great.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, nice to see. I'm excited.
Anything else?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night, I'm going to go watch the vote again.
That was gloating.
Larry's going to give us updates.
Okay. Back to business. Item 5.2, the Humane Pet Store Ordinance, our friends from the Humane Society of the United States. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Johnson, Councilmembers, my name is Karen Lundquist, and I am an animal lover, an animal advocate, and also a volunteer with the Humane Society of the United States. And I'm here tonight with two of my colleagues, also from the Humane Society, HSUS, and we're here today to ask the council to pass a humane pet store ordinance. A humane pet store ordinance is an ordinance that bans the sale of cats or dogs in pet stores. And for a pet store that wants to make animals available for its customers, they have to coordinate, partner with a rescue organization, or with an animal shelter, to hold adoption events and to have the animals made available or for sale and adoptable in that way. The Humane Pet Store Ordinance has been passed already in three cities in Minnesota, in Eden Prairie, in St. Paul, and also in Roseville, and it's also been passed in about 300 other cities around the country. Most of these 300 or so cities that have passed the Humane Pet Store Ordinance have done so in the same way that Carver would be doing so. And that's in a proactive, or proactive or preventive way, because there are no pet stores that are currently operating that would be required to stop selling cats and dogs, or puppies and kittens. And instead, these, these cities that have passed this ordinance have done so, first is a value statement, of saying that, you know, we want our ordinances to reflect what I think we, most people would believe is how we want animals to be treated in the 21st century, and that's not sold or not kept in cages in a store, in the front window where they're sold, but rather kept in foster homes and in more humane conditions. And these cities have said that this ordinance is important to, to represent the values. And there's also three other reasons that I'd like to share with you why these jurisdictions around the country have passed these ordinances. And the first regards animal protection and animal welfare, because it's widely known and very, has been well documented and well, and shown that the animals, the cats and the dogs, the puppies and the kittens that are sold in pet stores come from puppy and kitten mills. Puppy and kitten mills are inhumane commercial breeding facilities, essentially factories, where the, the animals are kept in inhumane and unsanitary conditions, without adequate exercise, without adequate access to the outdoors, without contact with human beings, and as a result, have very severe, oftentimes fatal, health conditions, and also behavioral issues. So when these animals are sold in pet stores, the consumers who buy them, thinking they're getting a cute puppy or kitten, in fact, find out when they get home that the animal has very severe, and again, often fatal conditions, health conditions, or behavioral issues that aren't disclosed to them, of course, at the time of purchase. And that leads to the second reason why these ordinances have been passed, and why we're asking you to, to pass it here as well, and that is for consumer protection. Because a consumer who goes to a pet store, you know, doesn't know that this animal is coming from a puppy mill or a kitten mill, thinks it's a cute puppy and puppy or kitten, gets home, and oftentimes, within a week or two, or even sooner, discovers the animal has very serious health problems, takes it to the vet, where they often have thousands of dollars of, of medical expenses. Sometimes they're able to, to save the animal, other times they're, they're not. And the current Minnesota laws, Minnesota does have a pet lemon law, but it's very inadequate for protecting consumers. Many people aren't aware of it. And also the remedies that it provides, one of the remedies, you have to return the animal. So if you're, anyone who has an animal knows you take at home and it's a family member, you don't want to give it back to the pet store, often be, also because you know that the animal will be euthanized. And, and that's not what people want to do, and also the reimbursement for medical expenses is limited to the purchase price of the animal. And even though the animal's sold in pet stores can be a couple thousand dollars, medical bills can be greater than that. So, again, the consumer protection that's available is simply inadequate, and these ordinances protect consumer, consumers. And then the final reason why these ordinances are important is that it can protect public health as well. Because there are diseases that are passed through bacteria, the bacterias, the Campylobacter, bacteria that is passed and has been documented by the CDC as coming from animals that are sold in, or that, that come from puppy and kitten mills that are sold in pet stores. This is a bacteria that's transmittable to humans, and can be fatal. And there was an outbreak just a couple of years ago in Ohio, Illinois, Indiana, and Wisconsin, no one died, but again, it is something that can affect humans as well as the animals. So in sum, the, the current federal, or federal and state regulatory and statutory framework simply doesn't address this issue of the animals that are sold in pet stores. And there is no way, under the current, again, state and federal laws, of ensuring that the animals that are sold in pet stores are healthy and are not coming from puppy and kitten mills. And it's for that reason that jurisdictions that want to take a stance and, and ensure that there are no pet stores that will open, that will choose to sell animals that are coming from puppy and kitten mills have passed these ordinances. And for these reasons, we are asking you tonight to, to enact this humane pet store ordinance in Carver County as well. So I thank you for your time, and we are here for any questions that you have.
I just wanted to mention, I read through your sample ordinance here from Eden Prairie, and Petco, businesses like that are not, or have not been affected by any of these ordinances, is that correct?
No, no. And I, I don't have any document, documentation about this, but I, I have read that, that stores that do have, you know, that follow the humane pet store model, where they're doing adoption events, actually are very successful, that there is not, you know, they don't have lower sales than the traditional pet store, like there's one up in Blaine, you know, the four paws and a tail, that, that there's many other ways that they can, that they can earn revenue, and it hasn't impacted their business.
Great. I just wanted to make a, a comment to the council as we think about this. I'm not sure if anyone has ever, has done any research or looked at pictures from puppy mills, it is disgusting, and these animals are treated so horribly. At Ragum, I might be saying that wrong, but it's a gold retriever rescue, and they have female breeder dogs that come out of that, that they rehabilitate, and their stories are heartbreaking, what happens to these animals. So, I'm an animal lover, careful with the tears here, but anyways, I just think, I appreciate you bringing this forward, I appreciate your hard work, because these outfits are absolutely horrific in our society, and I would love it if they would all go away and all the animals could be loved in a different, better fashion, so, there we go. So I just have a couple of questions, from the Humane Society of the United States perspective. Why does this just focus on cats and dogs, and not guinea pigs and birds and ferrets and rabbits?
Sure, and, and that's a fair question. Certainly the stance of the HSUS is that it protects all animals, both companion animals, domestic and wildlife as well. But it, it's shown that the, that the worst abuses, the worst offenders are the puppy and the kitten mills, and also with the, the worst impact on, on consumers and consumer protections, issues as well.
Okay. And then my second question might be more of a question for you, Larry. For me, I think this ordinance is great, and it would definitely address one side of the issue, but would there be a possibility that we could do in a parallel path ordinance against puppy mills and kitten mills in large commercial breeding facilities?
Yes.
Good answer.
That was a yes or a question, that was great.
I, I, just to comment, I'm surprised to hear you say that only three cities in Minnesota have adopted this. I am a cat owner, I have gotten all of my cats from rescues, and I have done it all at pet stores in the Twin Cities. And so my experience is through those adoptions at the Petcos and all the bigger pet stores, and they're great events. It was even tough for me to find kittens last year because I got, kept getting scooped up so quickly. So, I mean, it seems like a very profitable or beneficial organized, beneficial process, that adoption through rescues at these pet stores, it seems very beneficial for the store itself, so, I've seen it myself.
Mm-hmm.
I'm surprised that only three cities, because that's just my experience, is they only offer cats and dogs through rescue.
Yes, I would agree. I've been working, I live in Bloomington, and have been trying to get Bloomington to, to pass the ordinance with no luck as of yet, but I will persevere.
That's interesting.
What is their sticking points?
I think part of it is not seeing a problem, you know, that they're, like, like here in Bloomington, there are no pet stores that sell cats and dogs, they say we don't, this isn't a problem, why, why should we address it? At least in Bloomington and perhaps in other cities, they don't want to take a stance that might be interpreted as against business, even though it's not. That it's actually, it's, you know, the business model, the humane pet store model is certainly a, is a good model, as can be seen in, in, across, across the board. So I think there's various reasons.
I'll tie after the discussion, I don't support the ordinance. And some of this is going to sound really contradicting, I'm definitely an animal lover, I'm very familiar with Ragum. I used to volunteer actually as a foster parent, and it's more just that, I don't think there should be something at the city level. I do agree with, yes, the state and federal regulations haven't maybe caught up to current day. I'd rather see efforts put into that. I don't see this as something the city should put resources into drawing up an ordinance and then enforcing it if the time ever comes. To me, this is just much more hypothetical. I don't like the idea of just creating ordinances. I don't like in the sample how it says a pet store shall not, there's something about they can't sell. And I just don't like being able to tell a business owner you can't sell. I'd rather let the consumer decide where they want to go and where they're going to purchase, or make that adoption commitment. I just don't see it as a city-level decision, and for us to police even some of the things within the sample ordinance, how every kennel has to have their certificate of source three, within three feet. Who's going to go and police that? So, for those reasons, and I, it's, I don't want to sound like, you know, that I don't want good conditions for pets, it's not that at all, it's just more, what is really the city's role? What are our priorities? Where are we putting our resources? What's just a hypothetical, what's actually a current issue? So the way that, what's presented in the sample is not something I would support. Well, oh, actually one thing, if you have ideas on how we could get more involved at a state or federal level, that would be of interest.
Mm-hmm, so I, I think at least constitutionally, this couldn't be for the sale of animals in a pet store, I don't think constitutionally could be done at a federal level. At a state level, I know in California, they have passed a similar, a similar law that allows, that requires stores that sell cats and dogs, they have to be certified as coming from an animal rescue or a shelter. So they still have them available in ways, not just through the adoption events. And that's the only state so far that has actually passed legislation. I know there are bills that have been introduced in other states, but at least as, for the HSUS, it's the position, it's, it's, you know, until we get to that point of having more support at the state level, that working from, at the local level is, is the appropriate way. And, and certainly for, for enforcement, that's always an issue, just as there is an issue of enforcing, if there, for example, in Bloomington, I didn't, I didn't see, I was looking over the Carver's city code this, just today, and didn't see any specific ordinances about, about pet stores or commercial animal establishments. But I know in other cities that there are regulations, ordinances that require how big the cages must be, and, and the conditions of the pet store for the ventilation, and the heat, and things like that. So there is always a, a certain amount of, of enforcement, and how any type of ordinance would be enforced. But this, this ordinance also, it's unique because the state and the federal legislation, both the Animal Welfare Act, the Animal Cruelty Act that we have now in Minnesota, Chapter 343, and also the Minnesota Commercial Breeding Law, that these are all, they're more reactive. They are licensing, but then reacting, if there is a problem, a report, investigations, and taking action if there is a violation. And this instead is a, is a proactive, so let's deal with a problem that we know is a problem, again, that is well documented, that there is this problem of the puppy and kitten mills, and how can we deal with this and prevent them from having another place to, to, to sell? But again, in a proactive way, rather than reacting to the problems, which is what is currently what we have with the federal and the state legislation.
So my comment is that this ordinance here is an example ordinance. So the city of Carver, we write and amend ordinances all the time. We can certainly have an ordinance that, written for us, that would meet the needs that we see today. I prefer the proactive approach, mostly because the average consumer does not realize where their animal is coming from. They don't understand that. They see the cute little face in the window and don't realize that a dog has lived eight years in a four-by-four box pumping out babies, and then comes out when they're done breeding, horribly damaged. So to me, I would like to see something written, if the rest of the council agrees to, to meet the city of Carver's needs, and then we can go through the vote process at that point. Any other comments?
At this particular juncture, I'd like to say, for starters, I got dogs, I got cats, I buy them from breeders, repertory breeders, I hunt, I fish, I'm an avid sportsman. And to me, this ordinance, I know where I buy my animals. We've picked up, well, I've had strays that advertise and nobody wants, they end up at my house. My wife has picked up a couple of, from the Humane Society, a couple of cats, so I'm all in favor of taking care of what we have for animals. But, when it comes around to putting an ordinance in effect, that the state and the feds basically have washed their hands of, I don't see it as a high need. I think people are a little bit smarter, I, I think people are a little bit smarter about where they get their animals than most people believe, at least the people I run with. So, I don't see a high demand or high need for the ordinance, but I'm just going to vote.
So Mayor and Council, what we could do is summarize the discussion and the presentation, and then put it on as an agenda item for your next meeting, you can vote on how you'd like to proceed, if that's acceptable.
Sounds good. Any other further comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, to item 6.1, our 2020 Truth in Taxation presentation, Mr. Mayor. But you know what? Yeah, go. Sorry, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to open the hearing first.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and residents that are in attendance. So what is Truth in Taxation? It's essentially an opportunity to talk about property taxes and the proposed budget and levy. Probably by no happenstance, we, government gives it a really scary name, Truth in Taxation, rather than saying, let's talk about the budget and levy and answer questions. So if you're here to, here to comment tonight, thank you for coming and taking time out of your schedule. As staff, we appreciate that, and all the council wants that feedback as well. So tonight will be the, one of the last steps in going through the adoption of the budget levy process. The council will consider the final budget and levy at their next meeting on December 16th. And so getting into the property tax system, this is an example of the Truth in Taxation statements that Carver County sent out in November. Now, one of the things that happens to be kind of a miscommunication, or something that folks kind of struggle with, is this top right corner of the area in red, and the estimated market value. So that's not for consideration at tonight's meeting, it's something that Carver County establishes through a variety of different formulas, based on home sales, maybe what you've done to your property as far as improving your, redoing your basement, or renovating a bathroom. And so if you are here tonight, or for those that are watching, if you have concerns regarding your evaluation, and you want to contest that, we've provided a resource here, Keith Kern, who was the Carver County Assessor, is a resource for you to, to use in that regard. And then kind of understanding your property tax statement, the way that we like to describe it is, imagine getting your bill for electric, gas, and cable all in one. So although you get all of them in one statement, each city, or that, in my example, each utility has their own meeting and is responsible for their own costs related to. So you can see here, the city in Carver in red, our meeting is December 2nd, but there's also meetings for Carver County, for county taxes, and then the school district, as well as other special taxing districts. In this example here, you'll see the Metropolitan Council. The number on your left is your actual taxes from 2019, and then the proposed for 2020 is based on the preliminary levy that the city council set in September. And so just talking about kind of city finance- And so just talking about kind of city finances in general, uh, so we've, we'll talk a lot about the general fund and enterprise funds. So the, the general fund, uh, which covers our loans, snowplowing, parks, police, fire, et cetera, everything you see on the right. Those are paid through by property taxes, state aids, permits, fees and fines. The enterprise funds, which is what you recognize as your monthly utility bill, um, that'll pay for the wa- pays for water, sanitary sewer, stormwater ponds, et cetera. So all the, everything related to your water comes through your water bill. Everything related to what you see in this previous slide, police, recreation, building inspections, street reconstruction, uh, comes out of the general fund, i.e. property taxes. So this are kind of our processes explained. So we kick it off in June of each year. Uh, staff builds a draft budget. We have a series of discussions, work sessions with the city council throughout the summer. All kind of highlight or leading to a point in the middle of September where, uh, the council essentially sets a budget for the budget. So they'll set what we call the maximum tax levy and that's the most that the city is going to ask for for property taxes. They can drop that, but they can't increase that. And so that number is used then to generate your truth and taxation form. So then the county takes that number and then prepares that statement for you. Then throughout the fall, as those, uh, documents are being prepared, as a staff and council, we review the current budget conditions. There's some, has something changed? Is ca- have costs gone up? Have costs gone down? Is there a new program that's being considered? And so that's monitored throughout the fall. Um, and then residents receive or property owners receive their truth and taxation statements in November. And then tonight, that's where residents are invited to comment on the proposal, um, both for budget and property taxes. And then, as I mentioned previously, the council will consider the final budget on the 16th. And so the comments that the council receives, uh, tonight will be imperative to kind of where we land on the, uh, final budget on the 16th. Uh, so the, the budget and big picture, uh, there's $14 million in new construction value. And so one of the things that I think is helpful to, to think about when looking at new construction is it's typically a year behind. And so, um, what you, what we're adding on for this, for 2020 is, is basically the stuff that was added in 2018. So the new construction in 2019, uh, we won't realize until 2021. But it, it does in a way serve to dilute the impact of property taxes because you're bringing on that new value. So essentially more people to help pay for the services. Uh, residential market values, so I mentioned that, that upper right-hand corner box on that truth and taxation statement. On average, uh, homes increased by just over 10%. Now that doesn't mean that every home has gone up by 10%. It's the average. So some homes might have gone up by 5%, some by 15. And a lot of this is based on the neighborhood, maybe what you've done to your home as far as improvements go. And so that's going to be, um, kind of a, an individual property by property piece. And we'll, at the end of the presentation, we do a cross-section of properties and we look at different values and see what those impacts are. And so that can provide a good barometer, uh, of where we're at as far as a, a tax, uh, relationship. Uh, new debt service, uh, the city can, completed a really big, uh, street project. And so along with an equipment certificate for a new fire engine and some public services equipment. And so that new debt service or loan payment is just over 220,000. Uh, and then another big piece, because that influences, uh, costs, is there's no, there's no new positions within the 2020 budget. We're, uh, moving forward with the existing full-time staff, uh, for 2020, at least that's the proposal. Uh, a revenue, uh, overview, uh, aid provided by the state of Minnesota is called local government aid. You hear a lot about that on the news, that, that's, uh, aid that's given to cities from the state. The city's aid amount is going to increase by 35,000 to just under 150,000. Uh, we are anticipating new housing permit applications, uh, in 2020 for that to remain strong. And so you'll, you'll see that although we do try to be conservative with that, that amount. And frankly, it's, in my experience, it came from the 2008, 2009 housing bubble. A lot of cities were expecting strong housing permits. The housing bubble burst and all of a sudden you're seeing lots of cities, um, cut their, their budget based on their inspection revenues not coming to where they're at, where they're expecting. And then kind of floating back up to number one, uh, the state came back and cut local government aid significantly. And so, uh, a lot of kind of a new normal was established after going through that 07 to 09 period. Property taxes do roughly account for 78% of the city's revenue, so something to think about of how big of an impact that is. And then, uh, $25,000 contribution from the city's special capital project fund. So in essence, what that special capital project fund is, at the end of the year, the city wants to maintain a fund balance of 50% of its operating for the following year. So, um, in that, in essence, if our budget was a hundred dollars, we'd want to keep 50 dollars on hand for the following year. And so the council established a policy that if anything over that 50, 50 dollars, they wanted to take and store into the special capital fund to use for future projects or to offset the impact of the levy. And so, uh, this is what this 2020 budget does, is take $25,000 from a, a fund that has about $60,000 and it, uh, lessen the impact of the tax levy in 2020. So draft revenues as an overview, uh, the pie chart again reflects the significance of property taxes as a, as a source to fund the city's, uh, services throughout the year. And then fees, licenses and permits, aids and grants, uh, fire contracts. The city does provide fire service to Dalgrin and San Francisco Township. And so you see that represented in the graph as well. And then our expenditure, so debt service is essentially, uh, loan payments. And the loan payments are primarily made up of street reconstruction projects, uh, the fire station in City Hall. I breaked out, break that out a little bit in more detail in a, in a future slide. But then you can see public services, which is commonly referred to as public works. So that's going to be park and street maintenance. Community development is planning, building inspections, and then the other areas are more self-evident. Contracted services will be, uh, legal, engineering, auditing, et cetera. General government also includes, uh, the city's recreation partnership with the city of Chaska. Uh, so a strategy, excuse me, to, um, lessen the burden of, of the tax impact for 2020 relates to a, a loan, basically a loan payoff strategy. And you see here, the, uh, current payoff for our 2010 refunding, we had about a $235,000 payment plan for 2020 and 21, but then a significant drop-off in 22. And so the strategy here was to, although it extends the payment as far as, um, having a $185,000 payment, it provides about $50,000 in tax levy relief in 20, 2020 and 2021. And so with the significance of the 2019 improvement project, uh, we're proposing to, to use that as a means to reduce the impact of those improvement projects on the 2020 tax levy. And see here, you can see our debt service and its totality. So the 2010 refunding that included, included the street projects and equipment certificate and the fire station. Um, you can see there's been the Four Street Project, the downtown, uh, East and West, uh, City Hall, which came on in 2019. And then the Levi Griffin Road Project, you can see here, uh, we haven't been levying for that. And that's the, uh, street project that facilitated the development of the Mills Fleet Farm site. Uh, we'll have to levy for that starting in 2021. Mills will be coming out of the tax increment district. Uh, but we'll take on additional, um, market value from Mills kind of entering into the, the pot with everybody else. That'll offset any of the levy costs. Now the, the hope is to have those remaining sites develop and those, in essence, pending assessments on the undeveloped properties come in so that the levy isn't needed. Um, but when that does, that'll be another opportunity to re- reduce the tax burden, uh, for residents. And then this, an estimated outlook, the council asked to look at, you know, what could we be expecting in the future? So you can see the Levi Griffin Road section that I just mentioned. But something that we're also, um, looking at is, uh, the improvement of Jonathan Carver Parkway or County Road 11, which is planned for 2021. And at this point, this is a speculation on where the actual number is. The, uh, city engineer and the Carver, and Carver County are working on developing a budget for it. Uh, but we are anticipating, uh, some type of impact to the 2022 budget, uh, based on where we're at for planning right now. And so here you can see our debt service or loan payment, uh, levy history. Um, you can see the significant increase in 2019, uh, due to the City Hall project. And then 2020 would be related to the 2019 improvement. So that was the improvement of Crouchy Hill, um, Dietrich Elm, um, and Sunny Ridge, along with a trail project. And then the fire, uh, engine and public services equipment. And then here you can see our debt service levy over time. And then some specifics related to, uh, the general fund budget. So the, as I mentioned before, the city, uh, provides contracted services to Dalgrin and San Francisco Township. So the 2020 budget does reflect the acquisition of a $650,000 fire engine. That prorated debt service for the fire engine is approximately 67,000 per year through 2028. Uh, we've had an increase to the fire relief pension. So for every year of service, a member will earn a hundred dollars, additional a hundred dollars per year to, from 2307 to 2407. And then increasing their call and training pay, uh, by approximately 3.25% from $12 to, to 1240. Uh, law enforcement, a really significant, uh, change from years past. Uh, the 2020 budget reflects an increase in coverage from 1.65, uh, to 2.0 FTE or full-time equivalent. Uh, for many years, the city was partnering with Laketown Township for evening patrol. So that was covered through either a Tuesday through Friday shift or a Wednesday through Saturday. Um, and it really worked out well. The deputy would, um, travel between Carver and Laketown Township. Uh, Laketown Township was no longer interested in having county, a designated county patrol. And so we were left in a position, either we, um, fund the remaining 0.35 or we look at other evening patrol options. Uh, the sheriff came out early in this fall, early in the fall to explain, um, kind of the law enforcement, kind of overview to the council. And so you'll see that the contract increases for law enforcement by just under 45,000, which funds the, the full-time deputy and then our remaining prorated share of the, so, patrol car that they use. Uh, we also have $4,500 in the budget, uh, for law enforcement coverage for steamboat days. Another new item, our strategic plan, which the council developed, uh, earlier in the year, called for a community survey to be completed in 2020. Uh, with the anticipated cost to be 15,000. So that's prorated out through all the, the funds, because all the funds would have questions related to that. So there's about $7,500 in the general fund the council received. Uh, a presentation from a survey, uh, a company that performs surveys and does quite a few community surveys. Really looking at an opportunity, uh, we oftentimes react to, um, development plans and presentations and work product that the city, um, puts out there and then a resident will come in and say, I like this or I don't like this. And this is an opportunity to, to seek out without a specific project in mind and saying, how are we doing? How are we providing services? How are we communicating? What can we do better? What are we doing well? Um, and so an opportunity to gain that feedback. So that's included in the 2020 budget as well. Um, getting into some nitty-gritty stuff on employee health insurance. It's kind of, kind of the state of, state of things where 12% looks relatively good compared to the last two years when we dealt with near 30% increases and changed a lot with the employ- the way we provide insurance to the employees in the city. Uh, still made some other changes. The employees are going to provide, be, excuse me, ge- getting 50% of their deductible covered through a, um, high deductible insurance plan. Uh, the du- uh, budget also anticipates a 5% increase to workers' comp and 10% to liability and property. The city does receive its insurance coverage from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, excluding employee benefit insurance. So we, uh, do benefit from a really robust insurance program provided by the League of Cities. Employee related, uh, as we've talked about several times in council work sessions and approved, uh, earlier this year by the council, where we have a new collective bargaining agreement with our union employees that represents a, a 3.25% increase. Maintain, and we also maintain our 2019 staffing, staffing levels, uh, for full-time employees. Uh, the 3.25% is also for non-union employees. Uh, recreation services agreement, uh, Carver residents receive resident rates at the community center, town course and grilling center. So that program is continued in 2020. The council will look at, uh, whether or not to, uh, re-up that program. The Parks Commission, along with the Community Development Director, are going to be working on, uh, developing, um, an agreement to look forward into the future and continuing that, that the council will consider in 2020. Uh, but in that stead, the, uh, city of Chaska said they'll keep the existing fee of 51,250. Uh, and kind of another new addition to the 2020 budget, uh, earlier in the year, the city council supported the move to include Southwest Prime. So it's a, a new, uh, transit operation. It's from Southwest Transit where essentially it's, uh, more suffici- it's kind of Uber for public transportation. Um, Prime MD was added, uh, a little bit later on in the year. And so the city is planning for, uh, $15,000 toward these services. We're looking at about 9,000 right now, um, as far as where we're tracking for 2019. But it's one of these pieces where you kind of put money in the savings and as each person takes a ride, that's deducted. We're expecting continued growth as these, these programs develop. Prime MD was just introduced in October. Um, so we're thinking we're going to be in a position where we're going to use all of that 15,000 heading into 2020. Um, and then just looking at, looking at other areas that weren't included, because there's, you know, there's always things that just make the cut and things that, um, didn't, um, so not included, uh, pavement management plan, uh, additional street funding. And the pavement management plan is a, essentially a comprehensive review of the city's entire street system. It grades the streets, um, and develops a funding platform to try to, uh, plan for how you're going to pay for those. Um, additional street maintenance, public services, capital equipment, something that, uh, and that all include fire department capital in that as well. The city has traditionally budgeted a capital outlay within the general fund budget for additional equipment. Uh, but considering the equipment certificate, so the money that was borrowed for the new fire engine and the large pieces of equipment, we for- we forego, forwent that. Is that, is that a right word? We foregone that. There we go. That's the word I was looking for, um, in order to provide some budget relief. Managing the use of, of not, not only this facility, but other facilities. Uh, we were contemplating a full-time custodian, what you'll see in the budget now as we've contracted for the cleaning service for this building. Uh, then also Lions Park Shelter Improvements, uh, internship program and Monument Site. So just a, a couple of examples, this isn't meant to be an exclusive list, uh, but things that have been talked about throughout the process. And then kind of the, kind of the last pieces in, you know, um, street maintenance fund, the recreation partnership, evening patrol, uh, the spring cleanup, which is a really popular event, uh, as you can see the community survey, and then rounding up with, uh, Southwest Prime and Prime MD. So then getting to kind of the summary of where this, uh, puts us as far as a landing spot. So the gen- our total levy is comprised of kind of two functions. One, the general levy, and then two, the, uh, debt service levy. So the, our, essentially our loans. So the general levy covers, uh, the city's services. So that is about an eight, 8.8% increase. And then you can see our general levy history over time. And then our total levy history. So again, general levy is the normal operations of the city, all the things that you saw on those slides. Uh, the debt service levy is all the items that the city council has, has pledged to pay for through adopt, the option of resolutions after you've, uh, received bond funds to fund a street project, purchase equipment, uh, build a new building, et cetera. And so the total levy, uh, gets you to $3,38,375, which is a 11.9% increase over 2019. And here you can see our total levy history over time. So now getting to how this impacts residents and having that conversation. So the city will take its certified city levy, so the, um, three, just over the $3 million number. And that's divided into the total taxable market value of all the properties in the city of Carver. So it's every single home, every single commercial business, every, uh, industrial raw piece of land is comprised of that market value within the corporate limits of the city. And then that creates a tax rate. And so here you can see the, like, you can look at the estimated market values. You can see that on the far left is the residential, onto commercial apartments and agricultural. And, uh, sometimes you wouldn't think of an agricultural property or a farm being in Carver. But if you look at kind of your large tracts of property that were, have not been developed yet, you're primarily going to sit in agricultural. And you, that's why you can see market changes when that property goes from ag to another designation. So the far right are those totals. So that, that far right total is what is divided, uh, or what our levy is divided. So that, that far right total is what is divided, or what our levy is divided into to create this, what's called a tax rate. And so this tax rate, as you can see, is taken, we've used an example, what that does on a $300,000 house over time. Starting in 2013, we're at 1661. And then you can see here, we're at preliminary, at, we were at 49.59%. Have some changes. So that's where the preliminary levy was set at. And then going into that October, November time where we talked about looking at budget conditions and what should change, we're actually proposing a reduction in that preliminary levy that would result in a 49.31% tax rate. And so here you can see the city's tax rate over time. And so one of the things that we've talked about, I guess, I'm going to skip that and get to that in a later slide. So here you can see from top to bottom, Councilmember Mac, I changed that for you. How we relate to other cities in Carver County. So Hamburg is at a, you know, 117% tax rate. And you can see how, how that lands on a $300,000 home, all the way down to Chan Hassen. That's paying a $612 city tax bill on a $300,000 home. And there is some type of correlation, as you can see, to how these cities are populated, what their population is compared to their, their tax rate. So you can see Chan Hassen, Chaska, Victorian, McConney are the four most populated cities in the county. So although it's, I think the city of Carver is continuing to work on reducing its tax rate, it's, it's not a surprise to see Carver situated where it is as it relates to its neighbors in the county. And then so looking at that, how these property taxes are calculated. Here you can see your estimated market value. The state has a homestead exclusion, so that reduces the amount of your market value for tax purposes. And then residential, residential properties are typically taxed at 1%. So that your value, that 289,800 is multiplied by 1%. And that gets you to $2,898, $2,898. So that's your tax capacity. And that number is multiplied by the rate. I seem like I'm talking in circles here, but it all makes sense. Trust me. You take, there's nothing about folks' capacitators. So the tax capacity is multiplied by the rate. And so that gets you to all your city, city property taxes are created, so 1466. So for paid 2020, using that same example, the tax rate has gone down. So for a home that was valued at $300,000 last year and then to this year, we're anticipating a $37 reduction in city property taxes. And so on the whole, when you look at city taxes, our tax rate has gone down. So I think it'd be fair to say city taxes are going down. Now, that's not the, not going to be the case for every property. But the tax rate has gone down. That will continually be a goal, I'm assuming from the city councils, to reduce that tax rate. But as I mentioned previously, there are some homes that are going to go up in market value. So they're going to have a different experience. And so we also looked at this example using the average of if a property went up by 10%. So that $300,000 home, if it went up to $330,000, what would be that impact? So you can see here, their, their estimated taxes would be just under $1,600. And then so in this example, that property that was at 300,000 and going up by 10%, they would see about a $125 increase to their city taxes. And so looking at what that pays for, looking at the $300,000 home and a tax, city tax bill, 400, or excuse me, $1,429, it essentially breaks down to $119 a month. So you get a flavor here of what that's paying for, looking at street repairs, parks, maintenance, our street, street improvement projects. So that's the loans that we've taken out or bond money that we've taken out to fund street projects, buy significant pieces of equipment. You can see the new city hall there, all the way down to police protection and general operations. And then one of the things that we've done that I think has a pretty big impact is looking at a cross-section of properties. So we can, we can look at a $300,000 home, but in reality, there's probably not a lot of homes that are right at 300,000. So in order to kind of give a, a wider view of how the proposed levy is impacting residents and property owners, we look at a variety of different values. So you can see on the far left is the estimated market value from 2019 and then what that, so these are actually properties in the city. They pay, you can see in the second column, 29 city property taxes, what they paid. And then the following column is their market value, so what that's changed. So some went up 10%, some went up less, more. And then you can see their corresponding proposed taxes based on our preliminary levy. And then the far right column is probably the most impactful in blue is what that actually did to their taxes. So you can see, and I think a good example is the, so the one second from the top, the one that went from, the home that went from 249 to 261,2, their property taxes went up by $87. But they actually went up more than the home on, on the, on the last row that went up. Their home value went up from 457.7 to 483.4. Theirs went up by $85. We also had somebody that had a value increase of $4,000 and their taxes went down by 23, which shows that the tax rate went down, but the value of their home didn't go up enough. And so, or not enough, but didn't go up to the amount that they could realize the tax rate going down and the impact on their taxes. And so, I know that was a ton of information, but the, the goal of this is to inspire discussion, questions, comments. And so I'll throw it back to the mayor and council to open up a meeting for public comment.
Sounds good. So with that, I will open up the public hearing. Those wishing to address the city council should come forward and state their name and address for the record. After all comments are received, the public hearing will be closed. No further comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. So if anybody has any comments, come on up. None? With that, I'll entertain a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second to the motion?
We have a motion by Councilmember McKnight and a second by Councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Mac.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. No unfinished business this evening. Moving on to new business, item 9.05, the Riverside Park erosion discussion. Mr. Lannis and Roberta, I forgot your last name. It's like Cher. So this is the continuation of the discussion. In our work session, Roberta presented some options to ending the erosion in Riverside Park caused by the floods that we've experienced recently, most mainly in 2019. So.
And the removal of the bridge.
Well, not quite as recently, but yes.
Right.
So I will just kind of start it off. We're looking at some hefty price tags for these fixes. And to be quite honest with you, when I think about all of the big projects that are coming down the pipe, this does not rate up there in my list of priorities. I appreciate our parks. I love the parkland. And realizing that indeed this is putting this parkland in jeopardy, I still can't stomach the price tag for these. We have a levy that I think that we should be paying far more attention to and putting our efforts towards. So I will throw it out there that I have zero appetite to put money into a solution for the erosion in Riverside Park.
So I'll make some comment on that. I agree with you, these numbers are quite high. I also agree with you that the city has other priorities. You know, I also look at this piece of land as being adjacent to a lot of other DNR property. And I feel like, you know, managing erosion control on the Minnesota River is maybe not our core competency as a city. It is probably, it's a big body of water. It's not just our corner where it edges around our city. And the DNR might be a better entity to control it. And I like the suggestion that Brett threw out about having a discussion with the DNR to see if they would be interested in this property, if we can come to some kind of agreement to still utilize the property as it is still able to be utilized for boat launch, for camping, for archery, for other things, if that's possible. I'd like the city to explore that instead.
I had a few comments and thank you for the presentation earlier. Earlier in the presentation, it came up about the campsite. I have no concern on giving up the functional use of camping. I'm okay with the loss of the camping. When I looked at the seven options, the first two, I would not be in favor of the way they're presented. And the number three and four are a hybrid of them. That I would be in favor of looking further into and keeping part of the scope of the project, whatever it needs to be to make it an attractive candidate for funding, for grant funding. So the numbers five through seven, I just feel like on the, of our priorities and the size of our city, it's not a million dollar problem that we're ready to tackle. There's other things in front of it. So that's why I would narrow it down to the options three and four. I do like the idea of a partnership with something regional, state, federal. DNR definitely, I like the way you worded that, McKnight. That's. It's my real core competency. Our core competencies, but, you know, but at least at a minimum for as long as we can and as long as we can afford. And I guess we don't really know those answers right now, what the timeframe is and what the budget, just to that road, just so that there's access to it. So two questions I have is, is there like big picture? I don't know enough on the bordering land and everything. Is there another way in there? Like is there a road, you know, just a little bit north? If we ever really had to, we could make another entrance there. So that's one question and maybe it's not to be answered tonight.
Lori, I can give you a little bit of background.
And then let me just finish.
Oh, it was about that land, so.
Yep. And then the other thing is, I forget. Yeah, really just the, whether it be a partner with the DNR, the numbers three and four, I could see being workable within our budget. And I might have to come back to it. Oh, there was mention of how many linear feet as far as what, what might be asked of us for any mitigation.
Oh, what's allowable with no mitigation.
And it looks like it's going to be that 300 is a threshold. The piece, part that we're looking at, is that even way higher than that, way less?
I think this is on, it's, we're about 750 feet is our project. Yeah, we'll be on that. Okay. All right.
All right. And I'd like to hear more about, is there ever a possibility of having another road access?
I believe most of that land is surrounded by US Fish and Wildlife. And we have the marsh on the northish side, I guess. So I don't, I don't know, I know there's a trail on that back end that goes through obviously to Chaska, to the back of the ball field over there. I would be hard pressed to believe that the US Fish and Wildlife is going to let us run a road right through their project, property, even, right? Because you can walk and birdwatch there. Are you laughing at me or laughing with me?
With you.
But I don't want to rule anything out. I mean, maybe if it's, if they partner, it's their property too. We just need a way to still access the boat launch. Or maybe the boat launch moves. I mean, I just, we're open to all ideas.
Based on the terrain out there, there's not a real natural secondary access point.
So yeah, I didn't mean to interrupt you before. I just wanted to know that, yeah, it's mostly US Fish and Wildlife and that's not really their, their gig to let us put roads through there. So to follow, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to go?
No, I have more, but you guys go first.
I would, I have a lot of feelings about this because I would be really sad to see that park become water locked. I'm not sure that you, landlocked is the right thing. It'd be water locked, landlocked, because if you have US Fish and Wildlife, now once that road were eroded through and we have no more access, we would basically have a piece of city property that sits in nowhere's land that we can't get to except by boat, or maybe sloshing through a marsh. So I would find, I would, I'd find that to be really a sad loss for the city. We have a lot of history in that park. Not that a lot of it is showing now, but it has certainly served its purposes to the city over 100 years. For the campsites, I mean, they're there. Could they be moved? Sure. We don't have, we're one of very few of any municipalities, I believe, last time I checked, in Minnesota that actually has its own campground, so usually run by counties or state and federal. The archery range, I think, is a really great amenity. There's a lot of people who go down there to use that and then the boat launch. I do agree that this is a lot of money when we are looking at trying to certify the levy, which helps home and property and safety. So while I normally would not say I want to give up city parkland and say this seems like a great idea to have this gem go to somebody else, if there's a way that we could save it by doing that, I would certainly consider that option of doing some type of partnership with another entity if they so choose to go into it with us. If we were going to look at the cost summary, really looking at three and four would be the highest. I, I can't imagine spending any more than that on this project with everything else that we have going right now. So I'm a little bit torn on, on looking to the future of this park because, one, I think it's great.
I didn't see an option eight. Once upon a time, we had a river crossing there. River crossing that was there for over 100 years. That's why the river turned the way it did. Once we, we had a huge log jam there. Steve Walter, one of the top DNR officials, said this is the greatest habitat on the Minnesota River. Why, why do you want to destroy it? Well, not sure exactly why, but other than the fact we needed to get rid of the bridge, we took, we took the logs out. This is a river. The river's natural progression will erode and wear. It's happening on part of the US Fish and Wildlife property where the power line goes through. And there's a 270-degree corner that's been eroding a lot the last six, eight years, more so than any other time. There's a 30-foot hole there. Great. It's a great wildlife habitat. There's other holes in there that, along the river that are over 30 feet as well. One is a riprap hole where the old river crossing is. And then there's one right where the log jam was, there's a 30-foot hole there as well. So there's lots of natural areas for wildlife habitat. I don't see this, if I'm going to spend $400,000 or $14 million on a water treatment facility, I'm going to spend $14 million on a water treatment facility. It's infrastructure. That's just, it's more important to the people that have good drinking water than water that just runs downhill. That's what rivers do. It's going to erode. When you brought up the other side of the, the Secauc County side where all that silt and fill-in was, that, the way the currents were, that was a partial opening as well. So there were an island in the middle and the water went around both sides of it. And that was because of the piers and the currents that it created. If there was a way that that could be addressed, I don't know what a dollar amount would be, but I don't know if it's something that DNR would even entertain. That's my suggestion for a sec, for an option eight.
And just to follow up on that, there is a technique for stabilizing or what they call like stream training. Sometimes they're called Iowa veins and they're long rows of rock or other material that you put down the middle of the channel to try to direct currents in the, in the way that you want them to go. But they can be a boating hazard. And so that's the concern because they're all located below the normal water level. That because of the public boat launch, we have to be really careful that whatever solutions we come up with. That, because of the public boat launch, we have to be really careful that whatever solutions we come up with are boat friendly. And so that would be the risk to that type of structure.
Quite frankly, the natural progression of the river is, you're not gonna stop it. You might slow it down, but the river is gonna do what the river's gonna do. I grew up here. I've watched this river for a long time. I know it better than most people that ever imagined. And the reality of it is, is it's gonna eat up that park. But it's not gonna eat it up within the next ten years, I believe, just from my experiences of as many years on the river as I have. I don't see, if I can spend, like I said, if I can spend four hundred thousand to fix, keep the park, or fourteen million to make sure people have pot of water, guess what I'm spending it on? So I don't, I don't see any of these, any of these options, other than option one, as viable.
Just, I agree with Joy. I like the idea of the DNR partnership to see if they would be willing to assume responsibility for that park. I also agree with you, fighting Mother Nature on this one would be ridiculous. And I think, I also just wanna make it clear and reiterate, we are just talking here about proposals to fix the erosion. This park is still gonna flood, and this is the park that in twenty nineteen, Brian, it's not a stretch that it was open for fewer weeks. It was closed for more weeks than it was open because of the flooding. So we spend four hundred thousand dollars, and it's still gonna be closed due to flooding for twenty-six, twenty-seven, forty weeks out of the year. We don't know. So I just, just wanna be clear on that, just in case there's anybody watching who may not have caught the discussion in the work session. So this is four hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollar investment, and it's still gonna flood. And that's where I'm coming from, when I don't think we can, in, with, for my conscience, speaking on my behalf, we can't put one more cent into this park. And I, I do agree with you, it does kill me to see parkland. We've got such great parks, and it's such an amenity to the city of Carver, and it's really something that we hang our hat on. But this is not a wise investment from any direction that I look at this issue. Let's see.
Not even to save the burnout.
That's all the additional that I have. Anybody else? Nope. All right. So I think.
So, what I'm hearing, the city council would be supportive of staff exploring some type of partnership with Fish and Wildlife or the DNR. And so have some conversations, report back to the council what we hear, and go from there. Is that acceptable?
Isn't that you're going to, I mean, this is going to be on the guys that they fix it, so it's a, I mean, so that it's a functional park still? Or how is this discussion going to be?
I think we'd, without thinking, giving it a lot of thought, we'd probably approach it from multiple perspectives. So what does it look like to have them do a project? What does it have, what does it look like to have them take it as is and commit to nothing? And then kind of provide a, a table to say, okay, council, for this, they'll do that, for this, they'll do that. You know, two or three scenarios. And if you like any one of them, then we'd connect with the city attorney and start preparing an agreement that kind of formalized that, that you could review. But I, I think this, our next presentation will look similar to this, as if it'll be more, less on the engineering side and more on the, for this, we'll do that type of scenarios. And then you might come back and say, okay, we like parts of this and parts of that. Go back to their staff and propose this.
The only reason I say this is because if they are going to do nothing, then we have no reason to hand the park over either. I mean, it's still a city park. It's been a city park for a hundred, whatever years. I'll ask John about Walter. But we've had, I mean, it, the park gets used probably more than people think it does. But I would hate to see us give it to the DNR for them to do what we could be doing, which is, is nothing. We might as well keep it as ours and use it as we please for the next however many years till we can't get to it any longer.
I would also like to add that, if any discussions occur with the DNR and US Fish, I don't want any of their answers or remedies to the problem to jeopardize our, our levy project.
You know, and to, to that end, the one thing that I was thinking when I was seeing your presentation is when you were talking about kind of the erosion and the erosion underneath the total levy, beneath the surface. I assume we'd probably see pretty quickly with the existing level where our riprap is, if there are any issues with that. But is that anything that needs to be on our radar, that we need to be concerned about? Would be additional erosion where that riprap is, that's actually the portion where there's the levy that's protecting the city from the Minnesota River?
So I imagine as part of your levy recertification, or levy certification project, you're putting together operation and maintenance plan, inspection programs, all of those things that are required. And so your periodic inspections of the riprap would identify areas where you're starting to see movement of rock.
And that's how you inspect it, is from the top? Do you send cameras in to?
You, well, so riprap's heavy enough that you'll see movement as soon as, as soon as you start getting any kind of undercutting. It's not cohesive like bank material is. And so, so in this unarmored part where the park is, enough material has to erode to overcome the strength of the soil to hold itself together, right? And so, and then it comes off in a clump. But the riprap doesn't have any cohesive properties like that. It doesn't stick together. So it, as soon as there's a hole, it'll roll into it. So you would see that in your standard inspection program with your levy certification. So I'm not sure if that answered your question or not, but it's not gonna respond in exactly the same way that this unvegetated bank responds.
Okay, thank you. All right. You're good? You're good on your direction? Okay. Thank you. Thank you guys for staying so late. Appreciate it. Tried to get you as early in the agenda. All right, moving on to nine point one, the strategic plan, plan amendment. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city council was provided with an action plan updated on, on your strategic plan at your November fourth work session. During the work session, the council requested the strategic, strategic plan be presented at a regular meeting for a possible plan amendment. That plan amendment included the deletion of an initiative that looked at recognizing or identifying where future redevelopment opportunities could occur in the downtown. And so we're bringing that back for city council consideration at tonight's meeting.
Do we wanna talk about it, or I can make a motion?
Um, no, I just, I, we, Brent will occasionally, like you said, bring this to us, and we kind of reevaluated and thought of where we wanna expend our efforts. And this just didn't seem to be one that really any of us were feeling, to be quite honest, going forward, facing some of the challenges and some of the other new plans with the park plan and kind of what's going in there, so. Does anybody else have anything else to add? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to amend the strategic plan to delete identification of redevelopment opportunities in the downtown as a strategic initiative.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by council member Mock and a second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to nine point two, the franchise fee ordinance process work plan. Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. So again, this was a, kind of a strategic initiative by the, the city council looking at what franchise fees could do in the city of Carver as a potential revenue resource. As, as a, I feel like I'm Dan Boiam right now, but as a sidebar, when I put this, when I put this.
You had to go there?
When I put this graphic on, I wondered if the top right photo, if my nine-year-old daughter would recognize what that red thing is.
There's no way. No way. Nope.
So.
Can you ask her and report back?
That's a total Dan Boiam move. Now, we've totally went off the rails, so. He'd be proud. Minnesota statute allows cities to charge a utility fee to cable, electric, and gas companies for operating within the street right-of-way. And if you remember, so street right-of-way, you'll see the street from curb to curb, but there is, the street right-of-way of that is actually larger than that. That's where utilities go, so gas, electric, cable, our water and sewer utilities, et cetera. So those fees are intended to reimburse the city for costs incurred from those utility companies digging, digging within the right-of-way. The city throughout its history, I don't know if there's ever been a time where we've had a franchise ordinance, much less franchise fees. And so there's, there's several pros and cons. You know, there's some cities that have, have had a longstanding history of a franchise ordinances and fees. And there's other cities that have newly developed those. The pros and cons are related to, and they're mentioned in detail in the report from Abdo Ekin Myers. But primarily, it's viewed as another tax that's coming from that same resident or property owner. There are little nuances within that, so nonprofits, like churches and schools, that end up having these utilities will end up paying a franchise fee if it was implemented in the community. It's a fee charged to the utility, but the utility's universally listed on their, on a monthly bill that you'd get at, say, City of Carver franchise fee with the amount that you would determine if you chose to move forward. There is a little bit of a, kind of a wrinkle in, as we were preparing for this. For many years, probably under different names, the city has had Comcast as its cable provider. And we haven't had a franchise ordinance. Now, recently, Jaguar Communications has come into the community. They're providing internet service, but they also wanna provide cable TV. And we've mentioned to them that we don't have any franchises. But they pointed out a provision within state statute, and if you wanna know the detail, I'll throw it over to the city attorney. But essentially, in order to provide cable TV, they need a franchise from the city. So regardless of where the city ends up on franchise ordinances and fees, we'll have to lead you through a process where you establish a franchise ordinance. Whether there's a fee or not is a hundred percent up to you, but at a minimum, the franchise ordinance and agreement for the cable company so they can operate within the city. And so what we're asking the council to do tonight is to look at a work plan and see how this process would go. So this was essentially a stop or go moment as it relates to process. Over the next six years, the city has identified about one point six million dollars in street mill and overlay projects. And you can see some of the neighborhoods or streets listed there. And so primarily, this is being, at least in this instance, being looked as upon for an opportunity to fill a street maintenance funding gap, which is approximately one million dollars. The cities of Chaska, Chan, Victoria have established franchise ordinances recently, the city of Chan-Hassan. And you can see the, kind of a resident handout in your packet that's been provided. They're estimating about two point five million in annual revenue. They produced a pavement management plan, and then they're using the anticipated revenue from franchise fees to fund that plan. And so just the, and there's more information in the packet related to surrounding cities and peer cities. But looking at our neighboring cities' franchise fees, you can see twenty eighteen revenue totals for Chaska, Victoria, and Chan-Hassan. Now, Chan-Hassan is just using the cable franchise, but going into twenty nineteen, they'll collect more revenue based on their gas and electric franchise. One of the things to note also is the report that was provided to the city from Abdo Ekin Myers shows, I think it's a two dollar, two dollar and fifty cent franchise fee for gas and electric. Cable is typically based on gross revenue as a percentage, where gas and electric are typically viewed or used as a unit or connection. There are some cities, I believe the city of Shakopee recently tried to do a percentage on gas and electric, but really had a heck of a fight with the utility companies. So if the council wanted to get into that percentage of gross revenue, I'd probably defer to the city attorney on some guidance that the council would wanna get into. But one of the pieces that we'll have to know pretty early on if the council wants to move forward is what you'd wanna set these franchise fees at for the purposes of discussion. Obviously, you, you wouldn't be setting them, but this shows kind of the high side. The, the, the franchise fee report shows probably like the, I would say, the moderate standpoint. And so within your packet, you can see, I'm not gonna run through it, kind of line by line.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Quick, when we're looking at this, I'm not too clear on the sixteen thousand, the five percent gross revenue, how that works with the cable franchise?
Lori, can I pump that to you?
Yeah, I mean, many, what I suspect is at some point in time, when the cable system was built in the nineteen eighties, there was an ordinance in Carver, a standalone ordinance, and it's probably lapsed. Because in most cities, when cable franchises came in, there was one. It's long before my time. The franchise fee can be done all sorts of different ways, but as Mr. Mayor points out, that's usually a customary way that it's done, that it's based on gross revenue. There are some FCC requirements, including some recent ones, that limit the amount that a city can charge. The other thing you should know about cables, it's cable only. I mean, if it's internet-based, you know, there's, there's different limitations to it. And, you know, people get their television a lot of different ways now that they're on cable.
Thanks.
So in the, the kind of the work plan, we go through several kind of iterations of process where there's certain procedural things that you need to do to notify the utility companies, structure agreements, structure ordinances, public hearings, et cetera. But then also multiple attempts, could be similar to what you see from the city of Chan-Hassan, kind of in a more Carver-centric way, to give people the opportunity to educate themselves on what franchise fees are, how we propose to use the fees, and then opportunities to come in a listening session format, like similar to what we've, we've done on previous issues for the council to take feedback. And so that's our first addition of how it could look like. But it's meant to inspire to say, if you wanted to do something different as far as process, provide more opportunities, less opportunities. Or if you don't wanna go through this exercise at all, then we can essentially stop with the exception of carrying forward with the cable franchises. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, comments?
To me, this is like a game of peanut shells, right? So we're just moving them around.
I don't think we ever played peanut shells.
Well, let's say that you had. But anyways, really, you're just moving, you're just moving money around in a different way, right? So we're gonna, they're gonna charge it through, or we charge it to them, they charge it back to the resident slash consumer. So it doesn't feel super transparent to me to say, okay, we're just gonna collect this money, but we're just gonna filter it through all these channels before we get it.
I understand. It's a tax.
It is. It's a tax without saying it's a tax.
Yeah. And when we wanna compare apples to apples with Chaska, Chan-Hassan, to Victoria, they, all the taxes in Carver are so high. Well, what about your franchise fees? They don't know what the hell they are.
Your franchise fees that are higher for one franchise than our.
Like I said, like I said, the people don't know what franchise fees are. And.
It's still coming from the people to go back and.
Well, I absolutely agree with you. And I'm on the fence with this one. I don't like it. But we're short a million dollars for a bunch of road projects and road reconstruction. Correct, Ryan?
But still getting the money for this reconstruction process, just filtering it through a different process. And it is not gonna take away all of the assessments, will it?
Correct. No, unless the, unless that wanted to be the council's strategy, but I don't know if the financial model would support that. Be very unlikely. I don't know that for certain. But this funds the street maintenance mill and overlay projects that we don't assess for. Based on what we're seeing for revenue, it wouldn't be able to fund the city's portion of special assessment projects. So you, the references to the city of Chan-Hassan, their model is they're gonna eliminate special assessments. I don't see revenue that, from these, from the analysis that Abdo did, that would lead me to believe that we could eliminate. I don't see revenue that, from these, from the analysis that Abdou did, that would lead me to believe that we could eliminate assessments in the future for the city. Maybe at some point, if you reach the population capa- capacity of Chanhassen at, you know, 30,000 residents, but not based on what we're seeing on our current models.
A couple of comments that I have, so, and some of this came out in the, the city of Chanhassen in their communication to the residents that struck out for me was that, one, this is a fee that doesn't change every year like a property tax. They're only going to review this every five years, right, and compare it against budgets. So it's a certain amount that stays fixed for a period of time, so it's not fluctuating every year like people see on their taxes, right? It's also the same amount for residents, it's not based upon your value of your property, so everybody's contributing evenly to it. So those were a couple of the things that stuck out to me, that are a little bit different than a property tax. And so I, I like those aspects of this revenue generation, because I don't think it's as impactful to residents, because it isn't changing every year. Everybody's paying equally. And if we target it and communicate it, similar to how Chanhassen has done it and said, this is going specifically for all our roads that everybody uses.
Wouldn't that be the same way we would collect it, since it's not, what we're doing is not going to be assessed? We would be collecting that straight, we would be collecting it over property taxes to fix these, correct?
So people will be paying a different amount based upon the value of their property.
But we still will have to, because even these franchise fees won't cover that, so there'll be some of it, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But there'll still be some coming out of taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, under this model, the city will still assess for total street reconstruction projects. The difference is in, some cities do this, I think maybe at their own parallel attempt to assess for mill and overlay, but they're commonly looked at as a maintenance item, and so we're likely not going to be doing that, at least while Larry Harris is the city attorney.
Do you want to go there?
The mill and overlay issue is very difficult, particularly because of what happened with St. Paul. St. Paul uniformly attempted to assess street maintenance mills and overlays and that for a variety of reasons, one of which candidly was to capture tax exempt property. And they got in some serious litigation, lost and lost at the appellate level. So, yeah, Mr. Merrick's right, I'm the city attorney, I'm probably not confused. Because I think we'd lose if we tried.
So I'm torn on this too, just like you, Glenn. I guess my question for council is, there's a million dollars that we need for street improvements, the mill and overlay. If not through franchise fees, are we comfortable raising taxes significantly so that we can afford that? If you look at slide 85 of our packet, there are the budget choices that were not included in this budget. And it's the pavement management plan and the additional street maintenance funding, which, am I wrong in saying that that's exactly what we're talking about here? So we'll have to commit, because these streets are old.
Sorry, just, you started, oh, change my, right there.
So streets are old and are failing. And the very last page of our packet details the ages of these streets. And you can see, Currie's, one of the roads that I traveled quite often, and it's starting to crumble on the side. Their public services was through and filled probably more potholes than I can count on both hands before the end of the summer. These streets are crumbling, something needs to be done, and I don't want this to be something that's kicked down the curve. We do have a lot of really big investments that we need to make in our community as far as infrastructure, and this is one of them. And this is one of them that I don't want to continue to be overlooked and included in the future as items that's cut from the budget.
Brian, I have a question about the pavement management plan. Is that a computer generated system that, or application that manages, I believe I read that in the.
Yeah, it's, it is a computer base, but it also is kind of, you know, feet on the ground, inspecting all the roads and seeing what kind of condition they're in. So we try to get to the roads before they become really bad, and you can save them, you can get a number of years back out of them if you can mill and overlay them ahead of time. So if you stay ahead of the program, and that's what the plan kind of helps us identify when those need to be done, so that we can get another 10 or 15 years out of the roads instead of waiting too long. And then you're back to kind of a full depth, you know, taking everything out and rebuilding them, and that costs us even more.
What is the 30,000, because I'm just looking at the budget choices that were not included. So is this pavement management plan 30,000, what would $30,000 be paying for exactly in that pavement? Is it the software system?
So it's not a lot of, that isn't the software system, it's working with our engineers and evaluating the roads and coming up with a plan. So it'll break down all the roads, they'll grade them, it'll give an idea of when they should be done. So you'll get a nice budget every year of what we should be doing to kind of stay ahead of the program on our streets.
Okay. So it's a plan that's kind of created in-house, basically?
Yep, with our engineers, yep.
Is that the same, is that the same model that Chanhassen uses?
That one I don't know.
You know, it's not a big deal if you, if you don't, I just thought.
They would, they would have used something similar with that.
They do a similar exercise.
Okay.
Yeah, I must have went something else that, maybe it's from their website, but they, there is an image out there, I think it's on Chan's website, of, okay, you know, different colors designating which streets are in poor condition.
So what are you using now, then, just complaint based?
No, we.
The mayor calling you?
We went through it, we've actually went through and we picked our top six roads, and that's what we kind of, we got our estimate, that 1.6 million that we're out. Working with our engineers, we classified those roads as kind of our crucial ones coming forward, but otherwise, it's been, as we palm, as we go through them, as we do maintenance on them, patching the streets, helps us determine where we're at and where we can try to save those roads. So we're not doing, you know, a full depth reconstruction on them, you know, try to save them ahead of time.
Can you remind me, how old was Currie Hill, the reconstruction that we did this year, the re- street construction project? Is it 30?
It's constructed in like 84, 85?
Yeah.
Because that's when sewer and water was going in, so that would have been, what is that, 85?
30?
35 years.
See, everyone's mumbling a number.
35, 35. 35. And if you remember, when we went out for bid for the 2019 street reconstruction program, we had as an alternative or as an option, I'm probably not using the right term, a mill and overlay of Currie and High Street to kind of test the waters, to see what the price would be for that, and we came back with it. And we didn't end up doing it, so.
Brian, do you remember what that number was for that, the Currie and High Street mill and overlay? Just for some context for the council.
Yeah, I think we cut, that was just over, I think over 100,000 to do those.
And then how many blocks is that?
That would have roughly been, one, six blocks? Cul-de-sac.
Less than a mile, street?
It'd probably been right around that, yeah.
So one of the, one of the budget concerns is, so, for example, the Sixth Street West needs to be mill and overlaid, and I think that's around $330,000. So there are options, I mean, you could look at franchise fees, obviously, but you could also look at trying to include that with your, the Jonathan Carver Parkway project, and then, you know, bond for it, you know, depending upon if all the components work well and you can meet all the statutory requirements. And then you, then you're paying that back over with interest for 20 years, so it's just a matter of how you choose to fund it. You could increase your annual budget allocation for street funding from 70 to 150 next year to, and have a plan for, plan for it in that way, so.
So the Abdou, I guess we'll call it quote, had it in here at the flat fee per month of 250 for residential, and then.
With gas and electric.
And then it went, I saw it higher.
That was in Brent's presentation.
Okay. So why did we move to the higher number from the, from the Abdou?
So the, we haven't, I wouldn't say we've moved to one or the other, just wanted, we have, you have a set of numbers showing 250. I wanted to show a set of numbers at the five, so we'll need to get some guidance, we're not proposing any one of them. I will, I will say that from talking to colleagues in other cities that have gone through this process, it can be labor intensive, and they universally suggested, go for the, the amount that you want at the highest point, and don't try to come back a year or two later and try to reengage the utilities. And that doesn't mean it has to be five, but if you say like, we want it to be three, and that's where we feel comfortable at, then go for that three, don't. They said, at least suggested, and I don't know what their personal experiences were with it, but the idea of kind of easing into the water seemed to be a no good deed goes unpunished scenario. And so that's, was reflected as there's, you could go 250, you could go five, you could go four. So if the council chooses to move forward, we'll need to know in pretty short order where you want to start the conversation at. Doesn't mean that's where you'll, where you'll, where you'll end up. But it'll provide some needed information so that we can show residents the money that'll be generated, how it applies to streets, and so a conversation can ensue.
Do you usually find pushback from these companies when you go to do franchise fees with them?
Yes.
Do they have a leg to stand on?
It's, it's a complex and arduous process. My only comment would be, it's, I see cities that do it, I see cities that don't. I've seen a lot of councils in your position before agonizing whether to do it or not. Because it is a relatively complex process, and there's some pushback, not just, you get pushback from residents, you get pushback from the utilities, but we'll catch you there. But it's good to know that you're really interested in doing this, rather than getting into it and stopping, because I've had cities do that before, it's expensive. So that would really be my only comment. The other thing, I would make one comment on something council member Mike Knight said, not disagreeing with you, but pointing out something I've heard in other settings, which is that the fee is fixed, it's X, 250, 350 per house. The comment you will get back from your citizens is that's a regressive tax, because if I live in a $250,000 house and you live in an $800,000 house, it's a much, you know, it, it's a much greater. But I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with that, I'm just.
They're getting the same service.
So it costs us how money to enter, is, besides just legal fees of having the attorney, I mean, there's a cost to entering into this franchise fee?
It's the legal fees and it's the, it, it's what, it's what the council doesn't really see, it's the making of the sausage behind the scenes. It's relatively complex and expensive, so that's why, my only caution is, you know, are you truly interested in doing it? If you are, we'll get you there.
How long does it take generally to have that? If we were to, I mean, this is hypothetical.
Mr. Merrick has a very realistic timeline that he's put forth in his memo, and he and I have talked about that. I think that's relatively reasonable. Probably like all things, it might stretch a little bit, they always do. And then, just so you know, after it's done and online, the first collection usually runs 90 to maybe 150 days out from the time you get the final in with the utility, because of their billing cycles, and they have to get it enabled. And they have to file, it has to be filed with things that aren't in here, like the final with the Public Utilities Commission and things like that.
In the Chanhassen pitch that they use to their citizens, it says, would the city still assess property owners for street projects? And their answer was no. The city's proposing to eliminate the assessment practice if franchise fees are approved. Street projects will be funded through franchise fees and the levy. What would we, would we be, would that be an option that we would want to pursue or not?
It's not really a whether you'd want to do it or not, the franchise fees generated wouldn't be able to support both. You could do the street maintenance, I don't think you could do elimination of special assessments on its own, because there's not enough revenue generated.
Yeah.
Correct.
I have a couple of questions, and then I'll share my feedback. Do we have to say what we plan to use the money for? Is it just a best practice?
It's, there's been a substantial increase in the adoption of franchise fees lately. For reasons that are very complicated, I won't go into all the background. As, as council's aware, there are cities throughout the state that are neighbors and don't like each other. One of the common examples are the cities of Baxter and Brainerd, which got into a very, very serious issue over a franchise fee, because Brainerd's public utility, or Brainerd's utility provides some electrical service in Baxter. And without getting into it, it wasn't the basis for the decision that the appellate court in Minnesota made. But it was a decision that came out this year, there were some pretty, I would say, negative comments in the opinion about not having a defined purpose for the money. So if you're, it, it was kind of what I would call a bit of a shot across the bow. So if you're going to engage in putting in a franchise fee, my recommendation, based on what I saw in that Court of Appeals decision, would be, let's make sure there's a stated purpose for it, and that it's reasonable, that it's well reasoned. Seems to me this is a well reasoned plan, and we could certainly furnish it up, but that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, council members here, you could, you could include the scope to be maintenance of streets and trails. I haven't checked this with the city attorney, but I'm assuming that you could also use this for funding a future levy match if the city went through a certification process for that type of infrastructure.
We would just need a plan. I mean, if, if you're going to do it, my recommendation is that you have a clearly defined plan for what you want to use the money for, and I think if you do that, it's fine. What the, the Court of Appeals was kind of a shot, a shot across the bow about the city having a one sentence basis for why they wanted to impose a franchise fee. If, if as part of this process, you develop a plan that this is what you're going to use it for, I think you're, and it's, has some specificity into it, I think you're okay.
And I think we need it to tell the story, why are you raising franchise fees? So we need the money.
Right.
That's not sufficient, that's not our.
Yeah, and I think too, it's just more current times, since other cities are doing it, so I do support it. It's something I think should be implemented, and it's just good timing, because if we're seeing other cities do it. I like the idea that it's for utility users, so it's not just tied to the value of a property. So it also then includes businesses?
Yes.
I'd like to maybe see some of that on the correspondence, because everything just narrows down at the resident level. And then it also would include somebody who's a resident, maybe renting, but they're not actually paying the property tax. So I think it just broadens who can be contributing to our funds in the city. There is some of that on the very last page, I don't know if you saw that at one, oh, maybe it's up there now. 157 of the packet, it does show some small commercial, a large commercial, or what they, what it would look like if we were charging. Okay. Also, yeah, it's in the, it's in the $2.50 model though. But I'd like that it's not just so driven to, who do we, who does, who gets the property taxes bill? It's. And I do see in the, in the Chanhassen write-up, it talks about living in an apartment or a town, how I'm in the one lower corner there, that they're just charged to the, fees are charged by the electric and gas meters, and you pay that. The charge is passed through by the landlord, so the landlord can choose to absorb the cost, or they can push it back to the renter, so.
So a few things, I think tonight, we need to give clear direction on if we want to proceed with this. I don't want to get, you know, in the timeline that Brent laid out, I don't want to get into March and then balk on this, and after all the time and resources spent on this, decide that we don't want to do it in the end. I also just want us to realize that if not through franchise fees, there's $1 million with a street repair that we need to do, and be thinking about how we're going to pay for that, and be willing to include it in what would be the 2021 budget when we get to that point next year.
Well, we don't have to fix them all in the same year.
Yep.
Right, but we're going to need.
So it gets spread out, right, and we probably.
$100,000 a year, you know.
What we're saying that we would.
Yeah, that schedule on the last page.
Franchise fees, $200,000 on the $5 model and half that on the 2.5s. The other point that I wanted to make too is, I think, and I think Brent kind of talked about it too with the feedback from his colleagues, but I, it feels like if we're going to go through all of this work to start doing franchise fees. to start doing franchise fees, that two fifty a month just seems low. I think we need to go for something that would be sufficient to serve our needs and to raise the amount of money that we need to make the improvements and upgrades to these streets.
Mayor Johnson, may I make a comment, because I may have overstated earlier? You're not making a decision tonight.
No, no.
One, but if the answer up at the council is, "I don't think we really want to do this, but let's start and see where it goes," that's my concern. If you're... We're just looking for legitimate interest tonight and candidly direction to, I think, pursue Mr. Merrick's schedule and work plan.
Yes, but if the answer is no, I want to hear it sooner rather than later. I'm sure you do, too.
I... I'm not super comfortable with the doubling of the dollars amount from that we first saw with ABDO. When we're looking at this, I'm willing to consider this. I mean, we go through the process of having it have public comment and taking public comments on it, so... You know, I think that can help us gauge, too. I think we have to remember, I mean, this, again, we're saying, "Oh, it's franchise fees, it's not a tax." We are charging every resident more money per month for things that... So, cable may be an option, but your heat and your water, whatever, I'm sorry, your heat and, what we have in here is not...
Gas.
Electricity, sorry, it's not water.
Cable.
But cable's an option in your life, but heating your home isn't. So, we are putting fees on the people that they must have, right? This isn't an optional one that they can opt out of unless... Would stove, I guess. I don't know. I'm okay with looking at it and taking public opinion on it and taking public comment on it. So, I won't throw the full wrench in the process here and say absolutely not. I'd be very interested in seeing where we head down that, but... But, I mean, I think we need to be, I mean, say it what it, I mean, what it really is. People are going to be paying more per month overall for the services that they are required to have.
For their gas, electric, and cable.
Right, cable's an option. You don't have to have cable in your life if you don't want it.
Well, that's just it. And for the people that have it, they're going to pay for it.
Mayor Johnson, did you have a different dollar amount you were more comfortable with?
I'd like to open the five dollars for electric and gas.
I, I'm on the same page. I could even entertain higher. I... I feel that's wrong.
Let's keep in mind that this is a monthly fee that every resident is going to see that has cable or electric, gas, if we choose to look at cable as well. It's a monthly fee. I don't think it should be any more than five.
I agree with Glenn. I would be uncomfortable with more than five.
If we think five can get us for the foreseeable future and raise, bridge that gap of the funding that we need for these street improvements, I'm, I, yeah, I don't want to lift the ceiling much higher than that monthly.
I agree. Let's close the funding gap.
That might be a good name for it.
What I'm hearing is that we are comfortable directing Brent and Larry and everybody else who's going to be working on this, who is probably everybody in this room, except for you, Chuck, to continue down this road.
Yes. And so, I have a request. I mean, obviously, we're going, in the timeline, Brent, that you laid out, there's plenty of opportunity for listening session and gathering resident feedback. But because Chan-Hassan so recently went through this, it would be helpful to get either their mayor or somebody to kind of tell us what they went through.
I'm having coffee with Mayor Ryan on this week.
Fantastic. I would like the council to kind of hear that, so we know exactly what we might be facing.
That's...
And maybe what some of the pros or cons or whatever the residents expressed that might help us. This is exactly the single reason why I want to get together with her. And she mentioned at the mayor's luncheon that it was a really thoughtful process, and she kind of rattled off the different steps that they went and how they kind of... It sounded like really went out of their way to get resident feedback. And she made it sound like it was a fairly tame process. Did you guys get that? Presentation, I mean?
Yeah.
So, but...
I think hearing that story...
I'll talk to her and see where the bodies are.
Okay.
Bodies are buried and...
Thank you.
Right. What do you need from us?
If we get, I'd like to get a motion.
Oh, okay. Right. So, I'll make the motion to authorize a work plan for the consideration of a franchise ordinance and fees.
Make a second to the motion?
So, the motion was by Mayor Johnson, a second by councilmember Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, thank you.
Excuse me, mayor and council. I just wanted to, just for the sake of expectation, so at your next meeting, so your December sixteenth work session, what I would attempt to do is have a draft of what would go in the January newsletter, so just to make sure you're comfortable with the terminology and how we're explaining it. And that'd be kind of our first big leap into the discussion.
Sounds good.
Yeah. I think, just for my two cents, the language needs to include very strongly, like, and we want to hear from you! I don't doubt that there will be a lot of opinion. Not from us, from our constituents. So, I just want to make that really clear as we're considering this. All right, moving on to item nine point three, the City Manager Performance Review Summary. Earlier this evening, in a closed session, we formed Brent's performance review. He did phenomenal. We all appreciate him. He does such a good job for the city. He received an overall rating of a five, of five on a one-through-five scale, with five being the highest. Five is excellent, and according to our rating guide, it means consistently meets expectations and accomplishes work goals, consistently exceeds expectations and/or displays actions that assist fellow employees in the city hall in accomplishing its mission. Or in the city in accomplishing its mission, which brings me to some of his accomplishments for the year, which includes the city hall project. The successful, successful union negotiations.
Street project?
Yes, the 2019 Street Improvement Project, which was easily one of the most complicated projects, especially from an assessment perspective in recent memory. So, we're all really happy with your performance, Brent, and we are so thrilled to have you as a member of your team. Does anybody else have any...
Well, not that thrilled.
I'll turn this mic off, it's fine. Appreciate that. Any other comments? Call our commentary?
Thank you for all your hard work, Brent.
Thank you.
With that, I do kind of want to bring up what I had mentioned in his review. I would like to see us give Brent a car allowance, starting to amend his contract so that, starting in 2021, he receives what I'm proposing as a five-hundred-dollar-a-month car allowance. We have some information from the city of Victoria in a study that they completed recently that kind of lays out what all the benefits are to their two-area city managers and city administrators. And I think that in order to have the most competitive package for Brent or, you know, quite frankly, taking a longer view, although Brent's going to retire from the city of Carver, anybody who's in this role to have that as part of our compensation package.
So, you're proposing six thousand dollars a year?
That's correct.
And what is Brent's salary today? Brent, what is... What is our posted salary?
One twenty-three and change.
I am not opposed to having some type of of car allowance. I know in talking with Brent, he receives mileage and he has mileage paid for when he leaves the city of Carver and goes out of town from here to other meetings and things like that. But he did mention that he does not claim mileage for all of the laps that he does around the city, which I'm sure are quite numerous. When we're talking about budgets and things being tight and what we want to do with this, I am certainly in favor of something. Six thousand, to me, is too high.
What are you proposing?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was going to propose half of that. So, three thousand?
In my opinion, when it comes to our city employees, that's the best investments that we can make.
Three thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Three or six?
Three, I said three.
I would argue that six thousand dollars would be worth every penny, however I'm going to...
How many miles to put out? Humor. Okay.
You know, just in the last year... In the last year, the number of times that Brent has said, "Let's go down to city hall, let's check out the construction." "Oh, there was an issue on whatever street with this. Come up, let's drive up there that we've just tottered around and gotten in his car." He drives for this job. He drives around the city. It's...
So, Mayor Johnson, I support adding something that's part of a automobile or compensation monthly for that, because I know, too, there's trips to St. Paul, probably Molten Bink's office, St. Chaska. I don't know about Mr. Harris's office, but yes, there's definitely trips. I would counteroffer, looking at the data that we had, it looks like the average was about three hundred and ninety-three. So, I would propose maybe four hundred a month. And knowing that it's something that could be revisited year after year. But I think that would be a good starting point, as it would be new to add to the total compensation package of a four-hundred-dollar-a-month car allowance.
And that will take out any mileage claims then at that point?
Correct. It's also probably just one less thing for the administrative staff to have to do when it comes to reimbursements, so...
Sure. And Brent's time.
And Brent's time doing expense reports.
Where will this be taken out of? What fund? What line?
It would be staff salaries. And again, we're not talking 2020. We're talking the 2021 budget, because we've already sealed a deal on 2020.
So, then I apologize, because I was under the impression it was for 2020, which was giving me heartburn about we just went through all of this and where do we think we're finding money?
Yeah.
I am happy to go along with... Okay, Lori, can you restate what you had said so...
When we looked at the...
Now that she can hear you.
Yeah, now that I hear you.
The six numbers that we have from nearby communities that offer that to their city administrators or city managers was an average of three hundred and ninety-three a month. So, I propose four hundred-dollar monthly car allowance.
I can compromise for four hundred.
I can get on board with that.
All right.
We have Glenn's blessing.
For the record, I support it. I support five hundred, but willing to get something in the budget for 2021.
Okay. So, with that, I believe that we would need to make an amendment to his employment agreement? Or no?
Yes, I... You know, I was not prepared for this. I don't, what is the existing form of your employment?
I kind of halfway love surprising.
Do we need a new one anyways? I don't know, so, yeah, then we need an amendment to cover this.
Okay.
Somebody remind me when it gets close to the end. Well, I can just draft it now, just amend it now and just make it effective January one, 2021. Then we'll need a motion telling me to do that.
Yeah, let's do that before we forget about it. Let's do it. Okay, so... It says no formal actions, motions needed, but we will vote when it comes time to take a look at that agreement and not tonight.
Who does?
Yes. He's drafting it right now. Wherefore art thou thereas?
No, I'll... I'll come back with an amendment to his employment.
Okay. All right, so, thank you. I think that that makes me really happy that we're putting together even more reasons for Brent to leave, because I think it would be a huge black eye on any one of our records if he was to leave during our tenure, so...
Yeah.
Thank you. Good job. We are very, very, very lucky to have you and we appreciate you.
Yeah.
Council Communications, it's the number McKnight. None for me. The only thing that I have, and I kind of previewed it at our last meeting, but we had the mayor's luncheon, the chamber's mayor's luncheon, which took place the Wednesday, which was eight days before Thanksgiving, so a couple of weeks ago. It went really well. It's always a really fun event to kind of hear what everybody's got going on. And I got the, the video was finally forwarded to me today. I don't know if you got that, too, but I'll... I don't know if the city wants to share it. It's a half-long video, but I'll share it on my city Facebook page.
What is the video of, the meeting?
It's of all the mayor's presentations, so I'll also include in the message the timeline for when the Carver motion starts, so you don't have to... I went first, but it's probably seven minutes in.
Last weekend was the tree lighting, so I want to say thank you to all of the organizations in the community who helped out with that. It was a rather yucky day for weather, I'll just say that. I don't know if that's a great term for it, so... The turnout was a little bit smaller, but we also did do a food drive, though, so we did collect food that was taken to Bonnetonau Baskets, so... I want to thank everybody who helped out with that. Can I just tag in on that?
So, I echo your thanks. That was a great event. It was probably a really yucky day for decorating, but it was kind of perfect for the tree lighting, because it started snowing.
It started to turn to snow, but it was very, like,
delicate and gorgeous, and so thanks to Carver and the Minnesota, and then with support from the Carver Lions for that. It was a really fun event. Oh, and the low turnout. It was also in competition with the Chaska football game and the Gopher basketball game. So, I get it, why people... So, sorry.
You know what, that's fine. You know what, next year's another year. We'll just do it again. I believe we have an HPC meeting next week. And then will you be attending that, or is that just going to be Jessica from now on? I think, I think that's all I have.
The Plank Commission had a meeting, and we had a guest. Mayor showed up and said hi, wanted to meet everybody. And we went over the Parks Commission's 2040 2040 comp plan for the Parks Commission side of it, but it was specifically the part, dead fees that they gave their blessings to, so... Other than that, congratulations to the Chaska Hawks. It's been a long time for football state championship, and Brent, it's been an honor and a pleasure, and I'm looking forward to working with you for years to come.
Mr. Merrick? That'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember McKnight, second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.